Good evening. Welcome to April 24th, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. We do have a couple of board members zooming in tonight.
Which means any votes we take will need roll call.
Okay, so let us get started with review of old and new business.
Am I up? All right, I have a familiar refrain, no word yet on MBTA communities or ADUs. The Attorney General's Office gave themselves another 45 days to provide comments back on the ADUs. I'm a little disappointed in that. I do know that we are probably going to need to change things because, as I previously mentioned, they released more specific guidelines after we had our town meeting vote. And just due to the timing, we had to get it implemented within six months of the law being signed. And then, you know, town meeting, just the timing of it just did not work in our favor. So there will probably be some changes that come out of that one, and we're aware of that, and we're expecting it. So it's just disappointing to not know exactly what we're going to have to change at this point. But we'll hold out for it. Master Plan, we're going to be releasing an engagement video on that within the next month. It looks really good. We saw first draft. We're getting some pictures of actual Foxborough meetings because they had some placeholders from other communities, so we're going to try to make it as local as possible. But most of it already is. It's just a couple areas where we want to really personalize it. But it looks good. And we'll use that to push out more information on the master plan. We're going to be having weekly or bi-weekly surveys coming up soon on different subject matters to try to get resident feedback on things from transportation to, you know, historic character and things like that. We have, we did hear back on one of the grants that I submitted a month after starting in this position. So that tells you how long it took to review. We did receive funding from the Executive Office of Energy Assistance. I forget what it is, EEA. I forget the exact term, Environmental and Energy something. But we'll receive funding to look at our bylaws as they relate to the special residential regulations as well as the solar photovoltaic regulations. The former, because they're not really getting used, and we think that there are ways to make them a little bit more efficient, more streamlined, and encourage the types of development that we set out to encourage with them. The latter, the solar language, is outdated just because the technology has developed significantly since we put it in there. And there are some areas that we really would like to make it easier for people to do. Like, for example, if you have a big old surface lot with a lot of cars parked underneath, you know, we want to make it easier for people to do, you know, the shading over top with the solar panels on it. I mean, it's just, it's kind of a no-brainer use of land. Helps keep your car cool in the summer and provides energy, so it's win-win. So we're going to look at all those things, and we've got a little funding now so we can hire a consultant potentially, or a law firm to help us draft things that, if we run into difficulties. So that's good. Everything else is kind of up in the air for grant applications. 131 Moore Street. We actually did have a gentleman who approached us on that property several months ago. And I've been kind of telling him, you know, wait, hold on, wait, because the EPA is doing their assessment of the site, and they are right now actively. But he informed me that he made an offer this past week. So there may be a new owner, one way or the other, coming up shortly. So that, it would be, you know, it's up to the owner, obviously, but also he's going to find out about the environmental stuff within the next month, probably, and we'll figure out if he wants to keep it or not. I did actually address the state hospital auditorium. There was a public hearing at the state level on that, so it is moving. Hopefully, we can get that released within the next month and start working towards the development of that site. Other items. We were approached by a possible buyer, the Comfort Inn, who came to us with a, you know, a proposal that kind of, it's similar to assisted living, but it's not like a state-sanctioned definition of assisted living. So the concept is something that would be more affordable when you enter into the property and you have fewer limitations and fewer needs for services. They'll provide certain things as amenities that everybody can access, things like classes and, you know, meeting space and a dining area and one or two meals a day. And then, you know, you can age in place, and there will be a concierge on site that can work with you to schedule things like physical therapy or aides that come to assist you with daily activities, things like that. So the whole reason for this is because a lot of times the assisted living is out of budget for middle-income people, but they don't qualify for the affordable housing because they're kind of in that middle-income tier. So there are a lot of people stuck in that gap in services. So looking into our bylaws, we actually don't have a category that would allow for this type of use at all. So we're looking into, and I'd like to get your thoughts on it, either creating a new category for that or just modifying the assisted living use under our bylaw as it is. Because right now, it refers to that state definition, which has very specific services attached to it, but essentially, it's the same use, right? It's senior congregate living with shared amenities and services. It's just not as exhaustive as the state definition. So, yeah, that's something that, if anybody has thoughts right now, feel free to weigh in, otherwise, we can discuss it at a later time. It's just an interesting concept that came across my desk.
It's a lot to digest at this moment.
I know, I know. And I don't want to put you all on the spot. I just wanted to bring it to your attention, too.
So, I don't know how serious that is, you know, at this point, obviously exploratory, but I'm just thinking, wasn't the whole, or part of the whole package in putting together the auditorium was that it wasn't going to work unless it had what was envisioned as a, as an assisted living component to it?
Sure, so that, yeah, that's for the auditorium part of it. This is a different, this is the Comfort Inn.
No, no, I understand that, but I'm just thinking that, you know, depending on timing here or sequencing of two very different projects.
Yeah, and different contexts, right.
Because I thought the way I understood it is, what Paige was saying at the time, is that the auditorium itself probably wasn't going to work unless we could make money elsewhere. And right now, it looked like, in fact, we changed the zoning just for that reason, to allow that.
I think that's, isn't that more skilled nursing than assisted living?
It was presented as assisted living. I remember that.
It might be my misunderstanding, too.
Maybe we should just take a look at that. And maybe it doesn't mean anything anyway, but I would...
Yeah, I think that the difference is that the Chestnut Green area, that was more proposed to be, you know, full assisted living. This is, what they're talking about is more independent living.
Yeah.
That is kind of assisted living.
It is, but it lacks the amenities that would allow it to have that, like, state definition. So right now, it can't be built anywhere in Foxborough.
Catherine?
Yes.
Catherine, Tom, is there something, is there a similar business or that use somewhere else nearby that we could compare to?
There's, I mean, there's nothing that I'm familiar with. This is just an area where people have identified the need, and people, like developers, are starting to respond to the need for people who have enough money that they're not considered eligible for the affordable housing, but they don't have enough money to be able to afford the all-in turnkey packaging of, we do everything for you, so you don't have to worry about it. So, I mean, it can be like 5,000 plus a month easily to have like a full assisted living rent. Whereas with the affordable stuff, it's usually under 2,000, and, you know, you can get it even deeper than that, depending on your income level. But there are a lot of people stuck between those options. Like, there are tons of people who can afford between those options, and they don't qualify for the low end, and they can't afford the upper end. So usually, they just, they're forced to age in place or rely on relatives or whatever the circumstances may be.
And maybe this is, you know, just nothing much to do about nothing. I just wouldn't want to do anything that might potentially throw a monkey wrench in the auditorium project.
No, absolutely not, no. And that's something we'll look into, because I, you know, I briefly looked at those when I started, but because this has been such a long time in the coming, I haven't had a chance to really absorb it yet. So I'll revisit it. I wasn't even thinking of that as a potential conflict or anything.
And again, I mean, how much, depending on size or, you know, populations, how much can it absorb, one, you know, area absorb before it doesn't make sense anymore?
Right, yep. All right, so next up, we did meet on site to discuss the Lot 55 expansion over by Gillette. And I thought it was a good conversation. We had both police and fire as well as DPW on site. And our Assistant DPW, Super, he's going to address the remaining stormwater concerns and items related to the walkway, the engineering and design of that, and the way that they discussed the vehicle and pedestrian intersections, so where pedestrians will be walking between the aisles. As of now, everybody's pretty happy with the idea of jersey barriers to separate physically the walkway from the parking area and reflective strips on the outside. They discussed lighting, enhancing the lighting around those pedestrian vehicle walkways as well as adequate signage to direct people towards the walkway to avoid the main road where there's vehicle traffic. So I thought it was a really good meeting. Everybody seemed to be on the same page with it. So it should be, hopefully, knock on wood, I should get the updated draft from the Kraft Group shortly. And then finally, we're working with TreeTech at the composting site on East Belcher. There were a few items that fell out of compliance over the years, just, you know, there's turnover in staff at the site, so we're just working with them to get them back up to speed. So just so you're aware of that, I'm not doing anything formal, because it's really, they're very quick in responding. They've already moved most of the stuff that they shouldn't have had where it was.
That is the second time that...
I'm aware, but, you know, the turnover at those sites is probably pretty high. I don't think it was intentional.
I don't think it was either. Do we have anything on active subdivisions? Not today.
Do you want a motion for the minutes?
I'm sure.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the April 10th, 2025 Planning Board Meeting?
Do we have a second?
Again, I wouldn't have without voting.
Okay, I guess I'll second. Roll call vote.
Kevin?
I was not at the meeting.
You're on mute.
I don't think I was at that meeting either.
Oh, Tom was at the meeting.
I was, okay, then I approve.
Tracy, I.
Ron, I.
All right. Okay, being slowly passed 7:05 PM, public hearing, definitive subdivision, special permit, 60 to 62 North Street, Maple Crest Farms, six-lot subdivision, Jake Development LLC. Mr. Buckley, I believe you're representing.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Buckley from Bay Colony Group, and let me just pass out these renderings I'm going to put up on the screen anyways, in case anybody wants to take notes. So, again, good evening. We're here before the board. We're presenting a definitive plan, special permit for a six-lot residential subdivision located at 6062 North Street. So I know that's hard to see there, but let me just show you where we are. So these are the two lots. This is 60 right here, and this is the Patriots Revolution Field, and this is 62. And there's also a posse of land located in the rear here. So 60, 62, and the posse in the rear. So we're looking at about nine and a half acres, and I'm going to share another drawing here. There we go. So this is a rendering, I gave you just a small one here, and of course, it goes with the plan set. So this is a, again, it's a six-lot subdivision, open space residential. We came before the board a month or two ago to present the preliminary plan in order to prove for the number of lots. The design is pretty much exactly the same as we brought back then. It's about 561 feet of roadway that comes in off of North Street. The roadway is a standard 50-foot-wide layout. It has 22 feet of pavement, which is the town standard for that size lot, I mean, for that size subdivision. Sidewalk on one side, street trees. That's it. There's no waivers being requested for this project, except for one, which I'll address in a moment. It is an open space residential development. As I said, it's nine and a half acres. So this posse A in the rear here, which you can see in the back, which kind of wraps from approximately here to the rear, to the right of Lot 2, as you're looking at it from the street, or Lot 3, and then it wraps to the back. And on the right, to the north, is the Lotton Farms, and to the left, which is the west and the south, is Gillette, portions of Gillette Stadium. The open space is about 5.7 acres, which is 59%, the minimum standard. And open space bylaw is 45%, so we're significantly above that amount. One of the things I want to point out, and I know it's hard to see, but you can look on your plan and look on ours, and if you ever have a chance to take a walk out there, there's a decent-sized garden area out there behind 60. So as you go back, 60 is to the left, go past the house, and there's a nice, good-sized garden. My brother-in-law's jealous. It's still in operation, fenced in. And one of the things we're doing here, this open space, we're going to, it's going to remain private. So it'll be open space owned by the people in the subdivision, the six lots will have ownership of it. And one of the amenities we're looking at there, which we think is a good amenity, is to use that as a community garden area. So retain that way, be it a community garden area. The site does have wetlands on it and the light green, and what that is, there is a, and actually, in the rear, which we should have lightened it out, but we didn't, but in the very rear of it, there's also wetland. So the light green that you see there, that is a isolated land subject to flooding. And also, in the rear, there is a, that's a bordering vegetated wetland. And there's an intermittent stream along the back of the property, just off the property, or actually, it's just on the property, that dries up a lot of the year. So that's why it's an intermittent stream. In either case, it doesn't impact anything we're doing. We're not doing any work within 100 feet of that bordering vegetated wetland in the back, nor are we doing any work at this point for this subdivision, for the roadway and the infrastructure on the isolated, on the border, on the isolated land subject to flooding, which is the smaller piece you're looking at. So these wetlands have been certified by the Conservation Commission. We have an ANRAD from them. The area, so some of the discussion we had from our preliminary plan involved Lot 4, which is that lot at the end of the roadway, and it was, one of the comments was made by, I think, Mr. Peterson. He said, well, why don't we move that over? So we pushed that over 25 feet, up thereabouts. And the reason we didn't push it over more is because we're trying to stay 100 feet away from that isolated land subject to flooding. So we pushed it right to the edge of that, and it's given about, again, about a 25-foot buffer between the farm and the residential lot. And that will also be open space, be owned by the open space. One of the other issues involved some, perhaps some fencing along that property line, so if you, it's hard to see it on the plan I gave you, but if you go to sheet 3.2, it's, or 3.1 and 3.2, it shows it's a six-foot-high stockade fence that runs basically from the end of Lot 4 along the open space property line to the, to the single-family home right along on North Street. That is, that's owned by, let's see, I should know that, by Fariah. So it's this lot right here. So the fence runs from this point here to this point here. And it's a six-foot-high stockade fence. And that was another one of the issues, to provide privacy for the neighbors for this development from the farm and to perhaps mitigate any animals coming over onto the property. The site will be stored, served by municipal water, which comes in off of North Street, and we've had discussions with the water department on that. The water department is planning on putting a new 12-inch line on North Street, so we'll be, we've talked to them about how we'd make sure that this would be in conformance with tying into it at that point, because it's, this will probably be tied in first. But, so we've had that discussion. Underground electric, which is a requirement of the town, and we're showing gas, there is natural gas on North Street. We're not committing to it. Sometimes, that client, our clients are not interested in dealing with the gas company, because it's not a good product, but it's just difficult. So that's a possibility. Stormwater on the site, if you look at your plan, again, on the front here, if you come in off of North Street, so if you were driving into the site, it goes down, and then it comes back up. And actually, the ridge is along the back here, kind of the end of Lot 4, and then it drops back down into the wetland. And then, of course, there's isolated wetland over the left, as you're coming in on the south. That's a low area, too. So it's an interesting site. You come in, it's low, goes up, drops off to the left, drops off to the rear. So anyways, we're putting the drainage in that low spot, because that's what makes sense, and it'll be a stormwater basin that you've seen 100 times. It will be natural, it'll be grass, or it will have grass in it, and it's designed to hold the largest storm, which is the 1% 100-year event. The, we've had some discussions with the town's peer reviewer. We've made some changes to our design since you've seen that plan, the plan that you have. We've made some changes to it, some pretty minor ones, that had to do with adding a couple of catch basins along the street. And we've also had some discussions with the DPW engineer and the conservation agent. And the discussions with the conservation agent involved, she asked us to add some additional construction fencing to make sure we didn't, during this phase, going outside the 100 feet of that isolated wetland. So we said, absolutely, not a problem. The one waiver that we're requesting has to do with that basin. So our bylaws say that you cannot have a stormwater basin in a front yard. Unfortunately, on a corner lot, there is no rear yard. It has to be in the rear yard. There is no rear yard on a corner lot. So we're asking for the board, for topographic reasons and for the fact that there is no rear yard, to grant the waiver to allow the stormwater basin in a front yard. And I think that's it.
Okay. I've reviewed the file, and it seems like everything that Mr. Buckley has addressed tonight has been quantified by the Weston and Sampson peer review. The Assistant Public, Assistant Director of Public Works, Kevin Davis, is fine, except he would like to see an O&M once it is available.
Yep, there is an O&M plan in our stormwater report, and I'll make sure that it gets signed by the owner and given to the town at that point.
What about safety? Is anything from the chiefs?
No.
They've reviewed the plans.
No issues?
Yep, more issues.
The, yeah, the fire department, we did talk to them, and we added the hydrants at the beginning and the end that they asked for. There's one in the middle, too.
Did you, street lighting?
There's a street light at the end, and then there is an existing one on North Street already.
And is the plan for this to become a town roof? Or is it...
Yes, it is. That is the thing. That's why we built it to standard.
Okay.
So if this open space is going to be owned, I assume, by an association? And what else would the association be responsible for?
That's typically it.
Any common areas that are going to need mowing?
Well, like the retention pond? No. How about the stockade fence?
That would be on the open space, so that would be, the association owns that.
Okay, because I think that, in particular, would be an important, potential maintenance issue. I mean, if it's just a wood stockade fence, you know, they don't last forever.
Right. So we'll just have to make sure that that goes into the, when they give the, when the attorney puts together the homeowners' association documents, I'll put it on my notes. I'm sure Gabby will make sure, too, that that's specifically listed in there.
And any community gardens stuff? If they do it.
I have a question. Bill?
Yes.
One question Catherine brought up about the community garden. Is there going to be any fencing, any kind of way to delineate where the buffer area is, you know, with the isolated wetlands?
The isolated wetland goes, the buffer zone is right through the community garden. It's already there. It falls in it. So if you look on sheet 2.1, so take a look at 3.1, you can see how it says...
Yeah. We didn't bring the plans because we thought they were reeferized, they're upstairs.
So we're not, we're not proposing, at this point, I mean, maybe the association at some point will want to expand it, and that's their issue. They need to go talk to conservation. But for the moment, it's fenced in, and we're not showing any expansion on it.
So maybe we can add something, a condition, that if the community garden were to be expanded, they would have to file, the association would have to file with the Conservation Commission? Sorry.
Is the plan to build all the houses at once?
I don't know.
We don't know if it's a phased approach?
Economy's a little bit crazy right now, so I don't, I don't know what the plan is.
Kevin, Tom, any questions?
No, I was, the only thing I was thinking about was a couple of the lots creeping into the conservation area, but...
So it's, Tom, it's going to be owned by the association, so the individual homeowners will be owning it, and, you know, it'll be their job to enforce people not going into their, into the open space. Really, the only one I see is Lot 4. You know, Lots 1, 2, and 3 are kind of blocked out, as is 5 and 6. So 4 would be the culprit if there was going to be a culprit.
The only question I have is that I know that this particular developer had some open items on some past properties that were not in completion for roadwork and things of that nature, and I just want to make sure that there'll be a way for us to enforce And I just want to make sure that there'll be a way for us to enforce that on this one.
Well, we had a meeting with DPW, and they're submitting to us a, a report or a memo outlining what needs to be done for that subdivision to be completed so that it can be accepted by, by town meeting.
What subdivision is it?
It's Rothschild, it's off of Summer Street.
Did you, did that go to, done yet?
Not yet, no. I, I, we, I saw Kevin Davis, the Assistant DPW Director, and reminded him, so he promised me that he would get me a memo tomorrow.
And he committed to having it done by town meeting?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay. Because I was like, nobody told me.
Is there still, is there still a bond on that?
Yes, yes.
That's the only real leverage we have.
Yep.
Or would have, anyway. Yeah. Can we just go back to the retention pond for a minute? So what are you envisioning from North Street, looking at it? And just a field, pretty much?
Yeah, we're going to cut down all the trees in that area, and then it gets graded out, and it will be, it will look like grass on the inside and on the slopes.
Is that like the one that's at the top of Weston, on the left?
Yes, that's kind of linear in the back, you know, long. This one is more rectangular. And you're looking, you know, over there, you're kind of going in, that's kind of a bump, so you're not looking in it. This, you're up high, and you're going down. You're going to see it.
Bill, is it fenced in, or is it just graded gradually?
It's not more than four feet deep. So we, we don't, the bylaw doesn't typically, the board doesn't tip, if, the bylaw says if it's more than four feet deep, the board has the authority to ask for it to be fenced. So we, we're not showing it fenced. I would, my personal preference, if you're concerned about a look, is not fencing it.
I mean, I was, I was talking about the look, but also just, you know, not so much safety, although I suppose someone could drive in it, you know, but.
We could put some, you know what we could do? We could put a couple more street trees along North Street. We can do that. I mean, we, we could put a guard rail in that area there.
I mean, I don't know that that would be necessary. But I was, I was thinking more of appearances, and I think that would be good, especially if everything's going to come down to build the darn thing.
Yeah, we could put some street trees along north. Typically, we don't like putting trees in the bank. But this, if the bank is like this, we don't like putting trees in them, because they...
But I'm presuming this is going to be just pretty much a level grade?
This is just going to go down. So I think putting, putting trees along north in that bank will not destabilize it. So we can add more street trees on North Street.
Yep.
Good call, Jeff.
Okay, do we have any more questions from the board? Tom, Kevin?
No, I'm good.
Okay, is there anybody here that'd like to speak tonight on this subdivision?
You just need to.
Look to the mic. Give me a minute to address, please.
Terry Lawton, 70 North Street. Again, I'm really deeply concerned about this development going in so close to a Chapter 61A property. Along, this farm's been in existence for a long time. I think it's a safety issue to have houses next to a farm. And I saw that the fence doesn't really go through the whole property line. And I think that that is concerning. I think it should go the full, full property line, because kids, I have four little boys that love to run, and I think that the, that probably the people who are going to be buying this kind of house will also have children. And fences make good neighbors, good fences make good neighbors. I was wondering, just wanted to clarify, who would be responsible for maintaining the water retention area? I didn't hear that in the discussion.
Town, and once, once the roadway is, once the roadway, while under construction, it's the developer's responsibility. And then, once the roadway is accepted by the town, it's the town's responsibility.
What is the cost for that on an annual basis?
Typically, you, well, I will tell you typically, the town probably cleans out catch basins every couple of years. It's typically about $50 a catch basin. So you've got four catch basins, that's $200. And then typically, they seem to cut in, come in once a year, and cut the grass in the basin. So I don't know what that would cost, whatever an employee going in and cutting the grass for a year.
Can I just interrupt? Based on your experience, is, not the catch basins, but does the town come in once a year?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
We have two in our neighborhood.
Yep.
And they're both cleaned. One's, one's behind a house, and one's right off the road.
I mean, and I think you're right to be, raise the issue, because in the past, that has been an issue at different areas around town, for sure.
Yep, I will say that, over the last dozen years or so, that the DPW has been on top of it.
I just, I just worry about the extra cost for the town and the employees.
At most, it's going to be like $300.
For the labor.
It's, that, I mean, they're paid by the town. That's, I mean, it would take maybe 30 minutes to mow it, and then the 200. So even if you added $100 for their time, it's $300, so it's pretty negligible.
Okay. Is there any way that we, for the safety of the people who will be purchasing these properties, that that fence can be extended for the full property line on the north side?
We're not, the reality is, is it's not our job to keep farm animals off our property. So it's, so I think what we're proposing is putting the fence from that single-family home to the rear of our furthest lot is quite generous.
Well, actually, sir, I've never referred to any issue about animals crossing onto someone else's property, except for children.
No, I think you absolutely did at the last meeting.
Excuse me, sir, I'm talking. Please do not interrupt me.
I'm sorry, you're right.
Thank you. My deepest concern is for the lives of children. And, and I hope that we can consider human life number one and safety number one, much, much more important than money. Thank you.
Mr. Buckley, if you could, and your client was willing to extend the fence, could you go beyond the wetland buffer?
We would have to go to conservation.
Well, I would just say, I would not recommend, you know, even if there was a safety issue as outlined, that these stockade fences are not going to last. And so if, if there was some sort of fencing that went beyond that, I would recommend a change to chain link at that point, you know, at least it would stand up.
Well, you can make it, do you want to make it a vinyl fence?
They don't stand up.
Do you want it to be a wire, stock, I mean, a wire fence?
No, 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 I, I think the, the stockade fence is necessary for just screening purposes, if nothing else, you know? And there will be some noise that will be mitigated there as well, some noise. But, so I don't want to change in that. And honestly, as long as that's going to be written into the association documents, that, that maintenance, you know, is going to be their responsibility going forward, whenever it happens, probably happened 15 years down the road. But I, I was just pointing out, if there was a, you know, what is it, down to the wetland boundary, it's probably another 50 feet, 75 feet, maybe?
I would even say 75 to 100, but.
To the wellian boundary, it is a, let's see. It's another 120 feet, roughly.
I, I just would see no reason to continue. That, that stockade issue will just, it'll be out in an area where no one should be, anyway.
Yeah, out of sight, out of mind.
Yeah.
Who knows what happens to that fence out there?
Yeah, right.
What's on this property now, though?
What's on it?
Yeah.
Two, two single-family houses.
Facing north?
Facing, they're both facing North Street, yes.
Can you pull up the original photo you have of the existing?
Yep.
And what's separ, as you're doing that, Bill, what's separating Lawton Farm from the house that's on the right, that's there now?
My knowledge, nothing. I think there's a stone wall there.
I mean, there is a tree line.
Is there?
Yeah, so right now, we have this house here, there's, we have stock fence, gosh, what's that, about five feet tall, that we maintain, and electric fence, it's electrified fence. But we also, the Wills don't have young children, you know, and, you know, they're both retired. Very quiet neighbors. So, you know, I mean, I don't know, electric fence is tough, I mean, but we need it to, for the cows, right? And that's, that's how we keep them in, but it's not good for...
But where, that stockade fence, they won't even get to that point.
Right. So we have several layers of fence, in addition to the stone wall.
Anybody else? Closing or continuing? Closing or continuing?
I, I think, you know, all the, all the commentary from our consultants and, and, you know, town staff has been.
Everything's satisfied.
Addressed.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Definitive subdivision, special permit 6062 North Street, Maple Crest Farms, Six-Lot Subdivision, Jake Development LLC.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Roll call vote?
Jeff, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Ron, aye.
Kevin, aye.
It's five?
Okay, now we need a motion to...
I would like to wait for us to put together the conditions.
Sorry.
I would like to wait to put together the conditions for the board to vote at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
If that's okay with you.
Yeah. So a motion to continue, though?
Nope.
No, it's closed.
Right, motion to...
No motion.
No motion. It would be an action item on the next.
Yeah.
I'm kidding.
That was right.
A for effort.
And when will that be for interested parties?
May 8.
May 8.
At.
I didn't have a time, because it's an action item, so 7 o'clock.
Thanks, Bill.
And at that time, we'll review the conditions that were proposed tonight, as well as standard conditions.
That's correct.
Being a little after 7:10 PM, public hearing, site plan review, special permit, 0 East Belcher Road, Contractor Yard, Jay Cook Realty LLC. Mr. Buckley representing.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bill Buckley from Bay Cawney Group, and I'm here representing the applicant. Jay Cook Realty LLC, and we're here submitting a special permit in accordance with Chapters 275, Section 10-4, Special Permit and 10-5 Site Plan. And this is the modification to an existing site plan and a new special permit for a contractor yard located at East Belcher Road, which does not have a number. It's about 200 feet south of the intersection of Springbrook Road on the east side. So the property is listed as East Belcher Road. It's a 1.12 acre parcel of land, and it's located to the left of an existing building. And it's located in a limited industrial zoning district. It's boarded on all sides by commercial properties, on the north and the east, and across the street, and then 95, as you can see, is across the street as well. This piece of property is currently under an agreement for judgment between the town, the owner, and the town of Foxborough. And so the purpose of this hearing is to file a special permit to, for a contractor yard, which is the agreed-upon definition of the proposed use that's going to be there. So the site doesn't currently contain any structures. It's a, if I, what I want to do is talk about this first. What I talked about was the fact that this is a modification to a previous site plan approved by the Board of Selectmen. And so this was old, back when the selectmen used to do this. And what I'm showing you here up there on the drawing, on the board, is what was approved back then. And the red writing, I apologize for that, I don't know where that came from, who put it, just look at the black and white. So what it does is it shows the area was supposed to be used as a yard in order for loan, screened loan. And it was going to contain two entrances, which you can see kind of in a counterclockwise motion, coming in from the south, which is to the right, and then looping through the site, and then back out to East Belcher Road. Those entrances were actually built, I have no idea if this was actually built the way it was supposed to be. I mean, I remember it operating, but I certainly had no contact with it, we were not the engineers for it. But this kind of shows you the layout of it. And I think it's important to show, because I'm going to show you what the proposed is, and you can see that it's, it's, the area is generally the same that was proposed back in 1989 and 1990. So let me stop that and bring up our next drawing. So let me share this.
Can I, can I ask a question? I know this has been a troublesome piece of property for many years. What, and maybe I'm just slow on the uptake here, what is changing the use going to resolve?
I don't know, maybe the ZBIA can answer that.
Sorry, Larry.
I wasn't part of the...
Sorry.
I have, I've read the... I mean, I have, I've read the lawsuit and the decision, but I haven't been part of it.
Hi, Lorraine Brew, ZBA. So, um, right now, we've been meeting with Mr. Cook and his attorneys for the past couple of years, actually, on dealing with this area. It's been determined that it's being used as a junkyard, in our opinion. So this is all about, uh, coming to an agreement that can, um, have a use that is acceptable for the town, since junkyards are not allowed in the town. So, um, I think the intent is to have, um, this use changed, and that the owner would be removing much of what's there right now in order to have this become more of, like, I believe it's a construction...
Contractor.
Contractor.
He, he's never cleaned it up before. Why do we think that changing the use of it is going to get him to finally clean it up?
Well, I think that's part of the whole settlement piece of things, that that has to be worked out. There is a deadline for removal. We have some more steps that we're going through, actually. So, um, we've requested an updated list of what is still on the premises. That's due to us May eighth also, and seventh or eighth. And, um, at that time, we'll be reviewing that with potentially an independent party in the future to determine what really is business-related versus not. So we still have a couple more steps to do with that also.
Right. I read through Barney's letter and the judgment, and I didn't see anywhere in either the use of the term contractor yard. I know that Mr. Buckley had mentioned in the past that this was the avenue it was going to take. What I saw in the judgment, it was being called being compliant with his quote-unquote "towing" business, which is significantly different than a contractor yard. I would be much more in favor, um, of seeing it move forward as being compliant with a towing business versus the contractor yard. I think the contractor yard is going to be nothing more than a Band-Aid to hide the scabs that are there.
Yep.
So what I will say is, um, I, I did not make that determination. That was, um, I've had, I had discussions with Scott, who I think is on the line, I think he is. I thought he was. And so it was Scott's determination that it should be a contractor yard. Wasn't, was it ours? So if Scott's on the line, maybe he can...
It's my understanding that there is no category that allows for, like, towing business as such within our bylaws as they stand. Contractor yard is the closest approximation to that, and that use could be encompassed within the broader term of a contractor yard, if they're contracted for towing.
I'm just a little perplexed at how this is going to solve the issue that the town's faced for years.
I mean, is there any, are there any teeth in this, in this judgment and/or whatever we're going to agree to at some point in the future, both ZBA and planning or whomever, that he must remove these items in their entirety, like the railroad car, the old tractors, trailers, and junk that's been there for decades, before this use as the quote-unquote "contractor's yard" could even go forth? Because I happen to agree with Tracy, I think this has been an ongoing issue. Uh, there've been a number of town officials who've visited the site on multiple occasions, and I'm not opposed to changing the definition, but I, I'm in agreement with, with Tracy and whomever else feels that, uh, this has been just an ongoing thumbing the nose at the town over, for years, over what's actually there and, and what needs to be removed. So I know that, um, they say that they're going to get a list, a completed list, on the seventh or eighth of May, but I think somewhere, either through town council or whomever the right parties might be, that regardless of what new definition we apply, that has to happen before he can continue to use the land.
So our deadline for removal of all the equipment that's not related to his business, his towing business, is August thirty-first of this year.
And what happens if, if he doesn't meet that deadline?
Within the, there are next steps, but I'm sorry, I really can't speak to them.
I have them right here, I can read them, if you want.
Please, yeah.
So it says, um, what, what Lorraine just said, by August thirty-first, and then after that, Building Department and the Health Department have acts, and a representative of town in Foxborough Health Department access to the property not later than September fifteenth, for the purpose of inspecting whether such compliance has been achieved. Notwithstanding the foregoing, if despite diligent, good faith efforts to resolve disputes pursuant to the procedures established above, plaintiff and board continue to agree, disagree, as to whether certain items are not associated with and are not used in the course and conduct of a lawful towing business at the property. And a final determination has not been made as of August thirty-first, then only such items as are still in dispute at that time may remain on the property. Provided, however, that if it's later determined that such items are not associated with and are not used in the course and conduct of the lawful exercise of the plaintiff's towing business, the plaintiff must remove all such items within thirty days of such determination. Um, let's just see. So the town of Foxborough has reasonable opportunities to periodically inspect the property upon forty-eight hours' notice of plaintiff. If any disputes arise, I'm just skipping through this. Such dispute shall be resolved by a justice of the Superior Court, procedure pursuant to the procedures set forth in paragraph fourteen below. To the extent plaintiffs obtain site plan approval and modification of special permit approval concerning use of the property, then the terms and condition of such approval modification, if applicable, shall control and inform the resolution of any such dispute.
Okay.
And fourteen, let me read fourteen, because that was the one. If either party alleges that the other party has failed to comply with the terms and conditions of this agreement for judgment, she or he may mark a hearing for enforcement of the agreement for judgment upon five days' written notice to the other party and file with the court. The five-day period begins when the other side receives notice.
Okay, so basically, he can just continue to drag this out over and over and over and spend town's money by bringing us to court?
Jeff would like to...
Sorry, Jeff.
Just, and I apologize, I have not had a chance to review Barney's memorandum. Just so I understand, um, we're talking, these are two separate parcels?
Yes.
And does this proposed settlement, uh... ...address conditions on both those parcels?
Yes.
Okay. What is the current status on the, I, I would consider the original parcel, the towing business parcel, right? So I guess, under what, um, what is that operating under? Is there a site plan on that as well? And if so, what is it?
So here is the, um, this is, this is paragraph two, I should have given this to you. Paragraph two says, "Plaintiff and the board further stipulate that the plaintiff also uses the property that you're talking about, Jeff, twenty-four East Belcher Road, for towing business, which is a pre-existing non-conforming use, and that part of the property is also used as a motor repair business. Plaintiff and the board acknowledge and agree that a portion of the property previously was used by a prior owner, therefore subject to a site plan." Now, we're talking about this parcel, which was endorsed by the Foxborough Board of Selectmen on March sixth, nineteen ninety. So it appears, from what I'm reading in this decision, that twenty-four East Belcher Road, the use is a pre-existing non-conforming use. So therefore, I, I don't see it as...
Would that be zoning's interpretation as well?
Yes, but there are things on that business side.
No, no, I understand. Yeah.
Like the old railway...
Well, yeah, but, okay.
Yeah, really, we're only filing, I know, we're just filing for this parcel.
So, again, just going beyond the legalities and the property issues, is it, should we be understanding that what is being proposed here under this application will be an extension of that business? Will it be two separate businesses? What, what's the deal?
My understanding is this is an accessory use to that business. So it would be accessory to that business, a towing, towing business. He'd be allowed to continue to use this site as a towing business.
He does, he does, he's a commercial worker.
But not as a junkyard. Um, and as Catherine pointed out, there is no towing business in our bylaw, so the determination was made that contractor yard, C nine, is the closest.
So I did get a little bit of extra feedback via text with Scott. He said that, um, this use could allow for the planning board to enforce conditions. It would, by allowing the use and getting it out of that, that pre-existing non-conformity, it would allow you to set conditions such as buffers, which can be enforced a lot more easily than leaving it a non-conformity as it is.
Can we make it a...
But I didn't think this application applied to the original parcel. So why...
Well, right now, the, the...
How would we be getting that out of the non-conformity?
Well, right now, there, there are no buffers that are being observed, and I think that by doing this, then we can put enforceable action on that. And I, I know...
On, on the adjacent parcel?
On, on, on the parcel that we're talking about.
Yeah, all right, yeah, yes, of course.
But why are we...
But I, I, I think that it's important to consider that we are working in conjunction or in help to the ZBA case. So this, this is not an act of futility, but I think it's an act of helping another board in the enforcement of an action that they're, they're trying to take.
I understand that. And if, you know, we go forward with this application and, and, you know, act in some way favorably upon it, the only enforcement on the existing garage parcel would be through the settlement, nothing to do with anything we're going to put as conditions, right? I mean...
So there's, because this one is, is more complicated than anything that I've had to work with since starting in this role, can I just clarify that there's, there's no, like, when is any action from this board needed? I knew that you need to, you needed to file, um, as part of the court order, um, but how much time do, does the board have to consider this to, you know, analyze the, the situation and learn everything that we need to learn on it?
I would like a site visit as well.
Yeah, I think...
Please.
I think, I don't see any timelines, other than the fact that, you know, the timelines in here, but none of them say you have to do anything.
Right.
So this is just a regular special permit, you have, there's no timelines on special permits.
Okay.
When you close it, then it's, I think it's a hundred and twenty days. It's, it's a long time once you close the hearing, but a special permit has no timeline. It's not like a definitive plan or anything.
Okay.
So the answer is, there is no...
Yeah. Lorraine, what's the request of the planning board by the ZBA? Because I think you can tell we're kind of all a little not in support of this, but to Gabby's point...
So this is really part of the settlement approach that the ZBA is taking, is to have Mr. Cook come up with a way to use this land and manage it in a way that's acceptable to the town, because the current use is not.
Without disclosing anything that you can't, um, you know, I, I understand, you know, our purview is, is obviously limited to the scope of the application itself, but practically speaking, I mean, I think what we would do, and I'm sure you as well, consider the whole site, the adjacent parcel as well, as part of the same use, really. And so my point is, outside, you know, where will any enforcement come from on that other adjacent parcel? Is there some that I don't know about?
Again, all, all I can speak to really is the deadline of eight-thirty-one that we have for compliance with what we're working on right now with them. So we have made, uh, we met with them, with the attorneys last week, in, not an executive session, and requested an update on the status of where, what all of this eighteen pages of things that are on that site, how many are actually left. We were told that a lot of them have been removed already, so we're just waiting for update on that.
I think that's true on the parcel that's, falls under this application. I think that is true.
So, um, there's going to be another site walk by, um, the zoning, you know, certain members, and, um, then there's going to be an evaluation of what is being identified as related to the business, because, you know, we have a lot of questions about that.
Question, I don't even know if this is allowed. Could we require a bond? And that if it's not removed, we can call in the bond and use the money to clear out this lot, to, to an acceptable degree?
We can look into it, that's not, again, this is, this is the first time I've encountered a project like this, so...
Yeah, I just, I just, I, all I see is the town spending money, because I'm not in any way, shape convinced that this man's really going to do anything, and we're just going to continue to pay counsel, and he's going to just drag this out till probably he passes, and then we'll start all over again. I just think that, you know, and if I was a resident in this town, I would be not very pleased that we're spending the money on this type of thing, but I understand why we need to, but I just, why are we paying for this? Like, I, I would really like to see what other alternatives we have, so that if he doesn't comply, we're not, we're not stuck with the cost.
All right. Well, I see it two-fold.
May I ask a question? So, it's not, it's not in compliance, because we don't have anything in the bylaw that, that signifies this towing yard or whatever it's called. Are there, what, are there any definitions in, in state statute anywhere about what that would be? And are there any other businesses in town, like Central Street Garage or others, that tow vehicles on behalf of the police department or whatever? And how is it that they comply, you know, under that, that section of the law, whereas this, this particular thing is not, you know, in, in compliance? Not, other than the fact that there's storage of all kinds of things that have nothing to do with either business?
Uh, Scott says he, not that he's aware of, he is watching.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I started to say, I see this as a twofold problem. We have the site that we are acting upon tonight that we're discussing, and I drove by there twice today, cutting through to Mansfield, and there is a fair amount of material that has been cleaned up out of there. I can't say so for the one next door, and that's going to be, that's another fish to fry that we're going to have to deal with down the road. I'm not sure how much of this is ending up over there.
Well, can we make, can we make anything we do on the parcel we are talking about contingent on the other parcel in any way?
No, we can't, no.
So, I mean, the thing is, I, I'm not concerned about this application. I mean, we'll be able to condition that, but...
But we have no ramifications if he doesn't meet those conditions. We can't take the property, we would have to, like...
Well, it would be like any other site plan that would be filed. But, again, I, that's why I was trying to make a distinction between the two, and I, I do think, yeah, that's a concern. Have to do my homework and do my reading, I guess.
So do I. Will you do a site walk?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll wear my steel-toed boots.
Definitely.
Can, can we allow Mr. Buckley to do his presentation, though?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Buckley.
No, that's okay. I mean, the site, my sample is very basic and straightforward, I think all these other questions will need to flesh out. So what I'm showing you here is, uh, this is the site plan, it's, it's one sheet, it's very simple. Uh, I showed you the other plan, so that you can see that we're using approximately the same area that's being used that was shown before. There's, there's an entrance here... There's, there's an entrance here. This is one entrance. And this entrance over here has since been closed, but this is the one that's being used right now. You can see it's in a horrible location. It's on the inside of a curve, which is the worst place to put it, on a big curve like that because your site distance is very limited in both directions. What these, these squiggly lines are, this is the limit of clearing that's currently there. It's currently being used. So there's, there's a little bit of woods here. It runs along the back, along the front, along the side. This area out front, this line here, this is the town layout. It's, it's an odd layout. When the state redid, when the state came in and built ninety-five, Belcher Road used to run straight through to Elm Street. And then when they came through, they cut it, chopped it, and they created the cul-de-sac on West Belcher. And then they built this road on East Belcher that comes in off Gocassin and loops through. So that's why this doesn't look like any other curve you'd ever seen before. But this is the property line here. And what it is, is a lot of area out front here that is just gravel and being used for vehicle parking. And then in the back here, this is all gravel in the back. It's somewhat of a hole in the rear here, kind of in this point right here. The, what we're proposing is to just retain what's currently there. We're not going to expand it. We're not going to be moving into the woods. We are proposing to close this driveway here and move it over here. So now you'll have pretty much unlimited site distance looking to the south on East Belcher Road, and you have much better site distance looking to the north on East Belcher Road. So this will be the new access point. The other thing we're proposing to do at this point here is, he uses tractor trailers or lowboys, we call them lowboys. So he has, uses lowboys. And if you go, when you see the site, when you go, we do our site walk, you'll see you come in and there's a significant drop. So that makes it an issue with the lowboys and they have to jockey and play, which means they spend more time out on the street. So what we're going to propose to do is we're going to regrade this yard and pick it up so that a lowboy can pull directly in or back directly in if necessary. We will still retain the bowl. We're not going to pitch it off to the, to the north. And actually, to the north here, this is Spring Brook. It's not on our property, but everything flows in that direction. But we're not going to change that. It will continue to be a bowl. And again, we're not going to change any of the tree line that's currently there. What we're proposing, though, is along the front here is to add a six-foot-high, what's he call it? He has a term. It's called, it's a, it's a stockade fence, but it's a rough-hewn wood fence that runs along the front, and that will act as a screen to anybody looking in here, except for the entrance driveway, of course. And we've had some, actually some discussions with the DPW, a town, a Fox Bros. engineer, assistant DPW director. And what he has suggested and we've agreed to is he would like us to see, put us along the back here, a stone trench to act as a filter for anything. He doesn't want anything to be able to migrate off to the north and leave the site. So that will act as a filter, and we've agreed to do it. It's not on this drawing, but we'll put that there. And he also asked us to put some erosion control along the wood line there, where we're going to be building it up a little bit to make sure that any siltation, again, doesn't migrate off of the site. Some of the other issues that were brought up by, by Kevin, the town engineer, this area out here, as I was talking about, is currently used for vehicle parking. So what he's asked us to do, and he hasn't got back to me, I don't know if he's got back to you. He said, can you put up, can you, can you put some signs there, no parking? And we said, yep, that's fine, no parking. Now where the police can inform, enforce no parking along there. And then he asked if we could put some boulders along there to create a physical barrier. I said, if that's what you want, we'll do it. He hasn't, he wasn't sure that the DPW director thought that was a good idea. So again, if that's what he wants, that's fine. It's town land in that area there as well. So we talked about stone trench, the signs, boulders on East Belcher, and the erosion control on the north side. And that's it. It's really a very simple, from my point of view, plan, just regrading the site, putting in some fencing along the street, changing a driveway entrance, and putting in some, a stone trench in there to make sure that any thing come, that comes off any of those vehicles or tow vehicles stays on the site.
And so the thought is that this is where the, the tow vehicles would be stored, would be parked, like overnight, like-
This is where, so I don't know, you know, I don't know if he's going to put his lowboys in there. I don't know if he's going to put material in there that he's towed in. I, I don't know.
Does, does he store vehicles at the site for things that have been towed and need to be worked on? Or are those all in the garage? Is there like long-term storage of towed vehicles?
Currently? It appears to be. I mean, I don't really know what-
I, I don't mean like permanent storage, you know?
Yeah. You'll, you'll have to, you can make your own, up your mind when you go see the site.
Yeah.
It appears that a lot of the stuff stays there, or some of it stays there. I don't know how much has been there. I haven't been there for a couple of weeks.
And I wasn't trying to be glib. I mean, I just, and I didn't mean like, there's obviously many vehicles and other apparatus there that are there permanently. That's not what I was referring to.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but, you know, as part of the permit, as part, and it's, you know, through the building commissioner to enforce it, it would have to be equipment that would be considered part of a towing business.
And you had mentioned that out on that curved area on the town layout that currently people park there. Who parks there? Or is that more equipment and apparatus out there in the town layout?
Yes. Nobody parks there. No, no cars there.
And flatbeds out there with the corner of the bed at the edge of the road.
Yeah, no, no, that's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify that. Yep.
Is there a reason the applicant isn't here tonight?
I typically don't bring my applicants to hearings.
Wow.
I'm their representative and, you know, run through me. As you noticed.
Was there any thought to having access on the dividing property line, right from garage site directly to the, the parking area? I don't know what to call it.
No, because it's, you know, the lowboys are big, and that's just, they're not a very big area in the front to try and get through there. So we'd be bringing it in, in that, through that point.
Okay. A question that I raised today, and we have to do diligence to get the answer to it, is how many unregistered vehicles are allowed by law to be kept on a lot?
Two, right?
Well, it's commercial. It might be different.
Yeah, it's different for commercial. I don't know the exact number.
We're, we're looking into that. Residential is two, yes, but-
And speaking of that, I, I do need to talk to you about something on Main Street.
Sure. So with, yeah, with all these questions, because I don't have answers for the vast majority of them, I'll be going through and working to-
Right.
-try to get as many answers as I can subsequent to that site visit. So hopefully, you know, if you have new questions that stem out of that, you know, you can spend the time better.
And Lorraine, you know, I hope you don't take this wrong or anything. I mean, we certainly want to be partners in resolving this issue.
No. No, I feel badly I wasn't better prepared for you.
No, you were fine. We'll blame Barney.
Yeah, we're blaming anyone.
He's in London.
Excuses. He can, he can call in from London. It's just five hours ahead.
So it's-
One AM there?
He's young.
So we want to continue this.
Yes.
Oh, is there anyone from the public? I'll make a motion to continue.
Do you want to set up a site walk?
Yes, please.
Yes.
And you can continue it.
We want to continue until after we've seen the sidewalk, so we're going to move it out.
So that will be the continuance.
May eighth and the twenty-second.
Twenty-second, please.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing till May twenty-second for site plan review, special permit, zero, East Belcher Road, contractor yard, J. Cook Realty LLC. At what time?
Ten.
Seven-ten.
At seven-ten PM. Second.
Yeah, I'll second that. Just want to make sure that, for legal purposes, that a site walk would not constitute part of the hearing itself. Would have to be posted, right?
As long as we make no discussion.
We'll post it, but we can't discuss.
You can't discuss anything. You go and observe. No discussions, votes. Anything can be taken. You're just going to check out the land.
It's like when we did the parking lot expansion for the crafts.
That was a good site walk.
That was a good site walk.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion on the floor?
Oh, did you second it?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Kevin, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Ron, aye.
Jeff, aye.
Tom can vote on this.
Tom?
Um, aye.
Um, aye.
Okay.
Site walk? You guys have any idea?
Now there's continuation. Is there a motion for continuation now?
If somebody did that.
Oh, sorry, Dan.
Did that.
Okay. The zoning board is taking their site walk on the twelfth.
Of May?
Yes. I don't know what, I don't remember what time it is.
Can we do it at the same time?
I think it was in the morning.
Would they go?
What?
Go get Lorraine.
I think we can do it at the same time, right?
I don't see why not.
I think so.
What time is it at?
I want to say it's either like ten or eleven.
Okay. Do you want to email us?
But I, I'll let you know.
I'm, I'm going to get the answer imminently. I see the dots.
Bill, was that a site walk for the zoning board scheduled in anticipation that work will have, a certain amount of work will have been completed?
What do we just-
No, they're taking the site walk because an eighteen-page list was submitted.
Well, that's what I mean.
The lawyer claims a majority of that items have been removed. They're supposed to submit a revised list by the eighth, and the zoning board's going out there on the twelfth to see if it's true.
Can we get a copy of the revised list when it comes in?
Yes.
Prior to the site walk?
And this list is supposed to, like, the first list we got just listed items. This list is supposed to be more detailed, explaining what items are staying and why, and then what items are going.
And what the items are.
And what they are, yeah.
And he's not, I, I assume, Lorraine mentioned that there's vehicles with trees growing up through them that, you know, hopefully they don't appear on this list because I'd like to see the purpose for a vehicle with a tree growing through it.
I don't know what's there anymore. I mean, it's been a couple of weeks, but-
But we'll have a quality site walk with you.
Well, isn't this exciting?
Scott believes it's eight-thirty to ten-thirty, but I will confirm and disseminate that.
Scott, I hope you're feeling better.
It being a little bit after seven-fifty PM. Public hearing.
We gave you time for a nap.
Public hearing, definitive subdivision, Chestnut Street. Proposed two-lot subdivision, Hamilton Square at Chestnut Street LLC. And I believe it's Mr. Buckley again.
You're just the luckiest guy ever.
You know what?
The Bill Buckley Show.
I'd rather be here in freedom.
Shake.
We'll do that for you.
I'll confirm the timing.
Thank you.
Chestnut. Thank you.
They decided not to do the second one. Decided not to do it. Hold mine again, one second.
This certainly meeting took my mind off my head. Bill, when you don't have anything up there, I swear Tom's just sitting in the darks.
I don't know, this did not-
He's capable of relaxing.
No.
Yeah, I think he's capable of-
So good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bill Buckley from Bay Colony Group. I'm representing the applicants, Hamilton Square at Chestnut LLC, for the construction of a subdivision road, for a two-lot subdivision located on Chestnut Street. So you have the rendering in front of you, and I've given you a smaller copy. So what this shows you is this is a, this is an existing parcel of land that contains about five acres, and you can see it's outlined in the green. And it, it includes some of the land that is being used by the apartments to the north, Hamilton, I think it's Hamilton Square. The, and they, they use it for the parking for some of their units. And they come in off of Chestnut Street and then go into the site and use that area. There is a small shed on there as well. The, the remainder of the site is vacant. It's, has a significant amount of wetlands on it, which is, you can see in the lighter green. That wetland line has been delineated and approved through an abbreviated notice of resource area delineation by the Conservation Commission. And what went before you this evening is for the, the subdivision roadway, which we've gone before the board in an informal manner to discuss it. And though we're talking about a two-lot subdivision, it's really, we're talking about, it will end up being two lots after we're done, but we're talking about the construction of one new structure, which could be either a single family or a two-family on the site. So you have the rendering. Another thing to be, good to look at would be sheet three-point-one, which is a topographic plan as we start going through this. And so what we're proposing is to construct a lot that would be at the end of a roughly two-hundred feet of subdivision roadway that we would not like to build. What we want to do is to show you that we could do it, which we did show you informally during our hearing. And then we're, and what we'd like the board to consider is to waive some of the construction standards of the town in order to build this as basically a driveway. And we're, again, we're proposing it to serve one structure, which could be either a single or a two-family. I keep saying that because we've made the- or a two-family. I keep saying that because we've made the lot, which we're calling B2, 20,000 square feet. So, we deliberately made it too small to serve anything but a two-family. So, this is the R15 zone. It's also in a water resource protection district, but this lot itself is only going to be around 20,000 square feet. To have at least three, it's around 33,000 or thereabouts. What we're showing you on the drawing is the driveway coming in. We've had some discussions with the fire department, and they're okay with the design. They've asked us to add a hydrant at the entrance, right as you come in off of Chestnut Street, because there's no hydrants in the general area. So, we've added a hydrant coming in off of the 12-inch main on Chestnut Street. The driveway itself is 12 feet wide, which is a standard driveway in the town. Any driveway itself, again, fire department's okay with that, because it's only going to be servicing this one dwelling. There is not a turnaround. There's no cul-de-sac, but what we're showing is a hammerhead, so that if a vehicle, even a public safety vehicle, had to pull in there, they wouldn't have to back out on the Chestnut Street. They would have the hammerhead that they could back, back out and then pull straight out on the street as well. So, Apostle B3 is what we're calling the roadway itself, and that parcel would be conveyed to the owner of Apostle B2. So, the owner of the house, or owners, if it's a condo, would also own Apostle B3. And we're not proposing any further access on it. I've discussed this with Gabby, and we would certainly accept a condition that no further access could be, come off of that roadway for any other structure on Apostle B1. So, that would preclude any further activity on there. They could come back to the board at some future date and build a full road and maybe come in and ask for something, but we're certainly not proposing that for something like this, you know, a 12-foot driveway, one house. That's it. The site will be served by municipal water, and it, we're also going to be served by municipal sewer. So, this parcel does have access to sewer, because the condo, the apartment complex to the north has access to sewer. The pump station is actually right on the Ahern School property, just beyond the property line there. There is a sewer manhole in the parking lot there that we'll be tying into, or the house will be tying into. We're showing street trees along the roadway in order to, you know, in compliance with the regulations. There's no curbing. There's no sidewalk. Again, it's simply a driveway. We're requesting construction waivers. If you go back to the first sheet of your plan set, these are the same ones that the board has seen in the past for similar projects. So, the roadway width would be waived from 20 feet to 12 feet. The cul-de-sac would not be built, but we built it into a hammerhead configuration. There would be no curbing. There's no sidewalks, and there's no stormwater management system. We just would put a stone trench along the side, the right side, as you'd come in. And again, that's very similar to similar projects. The, it is a low area in there, so that that would, it would capture the runoff anyways that comes into the site. And again, there's no streetlights as well, but we could, you know, we want to use residential lamps. And some of the things that we're doing here as well, again, you can look at this rendering, but I don't like it. It doesn't call out what I want it to call out. So, if you go to sheet 2.1, what we're calling Apostle B-4 is a 20-foot, 25-foot wide parcel that is along the property line between the Ladonis and the developer, the owner, and he is going to convey that property to them, because they've been using that as part of their yard for years. So, that will be conveyed to them at no cost.
Conveyed to whom?
I'm sorry?
Conveyed to whom?
Ladonis, yes. If you go to the next sheet, which is the topographic plan, you'll see some of the other things we're doing along that buffer zone. We'll be building a berm. It'll be a three-foot-high berm along the property line, and we'll be putting 10-foot-high Jolly Green Arboretis along that property line in order to create a screen there as well. There's a shed on the property that they'll relocate, that we will relocate for them to bring it onto their land. The, it's about it. There is a, we will have to file with the Conservation Commission, not for the construction of the roadway, but for the construction, well, for the construction of the roadway or portion of the roadway and the house itself. We haven't gone before them yet, and we won't, because that will be whoever buys the lot. That'll be their job. I don't know what they're going to propose. What I'm showing you is a pretty large duplex. They might choose to build a single family. I have no idea. So, that will be done in the future. We know we have to go to the Conservation Commission, because we're in the buffer zone to that. And I think that's it.
Could you just review again, Bill, that sewer connection?
Yeah.
I don't think you're showing it here, are you?
No, we don't. We show it, if you go to sheet 4.1, we show a stub. You know, we don't, we haven't designed it yet, again, because until I see the house where it's going to go, I can't design it. But it's going to leave the site, and there'll be an easement granted by the existing owner to whoever buys this, so that they can tie into that sewer. And then they still have to pull a sewer connection permit with the town in order to be able to discharge into the system. I don't know if it's going to be gravity. I don't know if it's going to be force made. I'm guessing it's going to be force made, but I don't, I don't know until I actually design it.
Is that connection necessary? Do you need that?
So, this is in a zone two, which means that you can, you have to have 10,000 square feet for a bedroom. Well, this could have six bedrooms, four bedrooms, whatever. We only have 20,000 square feet, so it has to be sewer. So, it's actually more desirable, but in order to keep it to that smaller-sized lot, which limits the density, I need sewer.
I really don't have any other questions. It's pretty much the same plan. Sir, would you come, Carrie come and speak? Oh, no, you gotta.
Oh, sorry.
You get the podium.
Get the podium. Name, address, social security number.
I'm Scott Ladonie, 149 Chestnut Street. My wife Sarah. We've been talking to Bill and just talked to the owners of the property there that are requesting this, and obviously we've had a few concerns. Sarah had spoken to him and asked him for a few things. It looks like everything's, you know, seemed acceptable. There was a little, thought we're holding someone up. We're not holding anybody up. We're just trying to make this right. We understand that the street could go in there, but then you'd have to build like a $3 million home, so I'm not worried about that. But, so the 25 feet obviously is land that we thought we owned, 40 feet, like, it doesn't matter.
Not always the way.
Yeah, it's always, right? So, we've come to grips with that. It's not their fault. It's mine when we bought it. So, the berm is perfect. The trees are perfect. I am still concerned. Like, I look at this picture, and it looks like, wow, there's a lot of room for a driveway, and I know kids are walking up and down that street. There is, there is, you know, it's a busy little area, and the driveway there is kind of blocked when people are coming out of it in the springtime and the summer. But I look at this, and I'm like, wow, it looks like a lot of room. But when I'm there and I walk outside, I'm like, this, I don't know how a driveway is going to go in there, so I'm very concerned on how close.
I just had, excuse me, Sarah Ladonie, 149 Chestnut. My daughter's iPad was dead, but I did, I did just want to show some pictures to give you an idea, just reality of what our backyard is, what it looks like. Sorry, I know I'm supposed to talk into the microphone. Sorry to the people who aren't here. Just to give you an idea, it's, it's very different in reality than it is in person in our backyard. If you scroll through, you can see a few, a few, a few different pictures, but this is a massive, massive change to our life. Even if, even if we owned the extra 25 feet, this is, this is just a massive change to our lifestyle, having a home back there, whether it's two stories. Our main level of our house, because of the way our house is, is on the second story. So, you know, I invite you all, come on over for dinner, and you'll realize how different it will be having a home right in our backyard. So, we have asked for fencing on all three sides, because there is quite a dense buffer around our home, and with that being removed, I'm very, I'm very concerned. I'm concerned about, I sound very similar to the first one. I'm concerned about who's leaving our yard, but I'm also concerned about, about just the dynamic of, of our yard and our space and things, and things changing very, very vastly. Another thing is, is with the discussion of sewer, we would like to be considered in that and to have an easement, so that we can be considered in the sewer equation, because if they're putting it to that house, which is literally in our backyard, we'd like to be able to afford access to that.
Just to elaborate on that.
Sorry.
I'd want our connection, not just a little tip. Like, as they bring it over to that property, it is very close. I'm gonna, I think we're going to ask for them to bring that connection into our property. So, once the fence is up and the, I don't, years from now, when the, you know, if the septic system ever goes and we choose to connect to it, I don't have to tear up a fence and, and all sorts of, right? So, I just, that was, again, it was an afterthought after she spoke to, I forget his name, Mr. Stewart. So, that was just one small thing that I said, no, we'd have to, at first, I mean, I'd really request to have them hook it up while it's, you know, while they're there, but Sarah and I, we're not going to argue that out here.
We're doing our best to be reasonable neighbors while also realizing that it is, it is a vastly different dynamic, not just for us, but for the apartment, for everything. So, the berm and the evergreens are great, but again, to bring a two-story house in there, right in our backyard, like, even with that, it is just, it's, it's a lot. So...
So...
So, Oscar, let's just back up to the sewer issue. I think the customary approach would be to bring it to the property line.
Yes, well, you know.
Not into the property.
Yeah, but into the property. That's going to be fine, because there's going to be a fence there, so it's just not going to have to tear up everything and replant trees or what have you.
Just making sure it makes sense.
Yeah.
And has, have they agreed to the fence?
So, this plan shows a fence, and we've talked to the Ladonis, and we show a fence along this side. You can see here, we showed a fence here, and we show it on their property. So, that's going to be their fence, but we'll be placing it, so that what Mr. Peterson talked about in previous meetings, reality is, is they own it, so they get to maintain it. They won't have to fight with somebody who doesn't maintain a fence. And then we show it along the back here. Now, they're asking us to put it, so we have the berm and the trees and the fence along the rear, and the answer is yes.
In the fence going up all three sides, I thought.
Yes.
And there was just one corner.
I'm sorry, let me, no, go ahead.
Yeah, no, go.
So, the fence will be, if you look at my drawing there, from here to here, to here, to here, where it hooks on to this, there's already a fence there. So, it hooks on to that fence. So, it surrounds three sides. It stops at that radius point where it starts to curve.
What type of fence?
Is that, is that?
I was hoping it'd go all the way up. I don't know if that fence is ours. It's on up, it's right on the property line, but, you know, we, we moved it, but I'd wanted it taken down. One thing that I was playing.
Say it in the microphone.
I was taking, playing words with friends. I know someone here said vinyl fences don't last, which I started to research fences, just because I knew we were getting this fence, and that's one of my concerns I had was, there's $89 eight-foot pieces, and then there's $350 eight-foot pieces, and I guarantee that the $89 is ones I could probably carry myself. I wouldn't need anybody else. So, I'm concerned about that. Like, I'd want some sort of choice within reason. Do you know what I mean? I would not buy probably the best fence available for my property if I were to buy it myself. So, I would never ask anybody to do that, but I definitely have a reputation not to buy the least expensive too. Do you know what I mean?
You're not thinking that you're going to install it yourself?
No, no, no. I'm just saying that they're going to install it, but I know if the, the, if the deal is they have to put up a fence, they're going to go out and go to Grossman's dogging outlet or whatever, buy the cheapest white fence, and then throw it up. And that, I just want to, I don't know how we could word that, that it has to be, whether we go out and pick out the fence today and show it to them, so this way, if it doesn't happen, I mean, I don't know if this is going to be built tomorrow or in 10 years. Do you know what I mean? But if we should just be able to have a fence, say, look, this is what we'd be looking for, this 200, I don't know, whatever the fence is. I'd obviously go out and pick a quality one that's not too crazy, reasonable, something I'd use myself. I just don't want it to be a, you know, $49.99.
Well, I think, I think to date, from what we see here, it seems that there's been pretty good communications.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. We're doing our best. And just by way of explanation, and again, I apologize to the people on Zoom, I did want to show you a picture of the corner and why we are asking for three sides of the yard to be fenced in to maintain.
It's all right, because they agreed to it.
Oh, good. Okay. I just wanted to show the board and just explain it.
And then, these fences here, like, the other day I was looking, I was just telling Sarah this afternoon.
You, microphone.
We have, we have a deck off the back, and one side of it has a wall that protects us from the apartments on the.
Privacy screen.
Yeah, the, a privacy screen on this side. On the side of the apartments where the Hamilton is, we do not have one, because in the summer, it fills in unbelievable right now. It is, it is, you can't see anything. Do you know what I mean? And the, it's starting to become, yeah, right now, not so much. Another three weeks, month, you can't see anything in there. And again, I'm out there yesterday. It's a beautiful day out. I'm taking, I think it was Tuesday, whatever day, I was out there. I'm looking over, and I'm like, damn, this is going to be terrible. Like, it's, I'm going to have to put another privacy side on this. And then I'm looking down, how about when I'm downstairs? Like, is the fence going to be enough? Do you know what I mean? Like, I don't know if a few trees are going to be enough on that side either. So, I don't know what trees there are, if they can put a few more trees in. Do you know what I mean? I don't want, I don't think I'd want the green shrubs that we're going to have all the way in the back, although they might work. But I'm just looking for something that's going to grow over time, look nice, and separate us from the front. Not to mention, when you pull into this new driveway to the left of it, which we also thought we owned, if you look at the lot of land, you'd understand why we would think we owned it. Once that's all cleaned up, I'm like, who's going to maintain that? Because it, I've cleaned it up as much as I can. It is kind of growing wild. Do you know what I mean? So, I just don't know how that's going to be maintained. So...
I think at this point, we wouldn't know how that would be presented in final form, because it would be a homeowner decision or an association decision if it was condoized.
But they'd be responsible for it.
It might be grass. That would be voted all the time, you know, or it might be some other application.
Short answer on the trees to the north, as we're looking at it, we're not offering more trees, but I can, what I can do is thin out. I'll take that number in the rear and put some of them over on the side.
No, forget it.
That's what you want.
No.
I think the rear is the biggest concern.
The rear, because on a second.
Because that looks into every window in our home.
See the back there? Look at, see, see here? Look. See right here?
Yeah.
That's not screening your house. So, see, you're looking at that. If you thinned out some of these and put them in here, that could do it. But the other thing is, I just want you to understand. People always ask for that. They say, oh, like, for us to plant trees, we have to cut down the trees.
Yeah.
So, if we're going to go in there, we're going to be cutting down trees in order to plant the trees. So, just so you know, I'm just pointing.
No, when I look in there, that's, you're going to be cutting down a lot of trees and to put in that driveway, a lot.
It's a 12-foot-wide driveway, so it's, it's, that's a 55-foot right-of-way. I mean, it's, you know, we'll do the best we can in there. It doesn't need to be as straight as that. If there's any trees, you know, specimen trees or things you want saved, we can certainly go around them, as long as we stay within the layout.
Okay, so that's something we can...
The layout would be coming here into this.
No, but you see the width of it. The width of the green is what they own. So, we can, if there's some trees along your line that you want to save, we can certainly do that.
So, you're willing, you guys are willing to work with us as this project progresses?
And I, the owner is a local person. So, I mean, the developer, and the person who currently has it under purchase sale is a local guy. So, yes, I'm not, I'm sure there won't be an issue.
And that's the other concern I was mentioning. And that's the other concern I was mentioning. Once this is done and it's approved, we are dealing with the builder. We're not dealing with a person that's going to live, live in that house, like, I don't think, if he's, it's going to be, if there was someone building the house...
Probably not.
Yeah, I'd, I'd feel great, and I'd feel, because I know they'd want something nice, and we want to be good neighbors, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we were talking about the other day, hello, you know, we'll probably get along with whoever lives there, I just want it to look nice, do you know what I mean? But we'll, you know, I, I do have some concerns, and one of them was the fence. Like, I really am concerned about the quality of the fence. The bushes out back, I don't know how to read these plans, you know, a car guy, but I don't know if those say they're going to be seven foot, so we have a minimum size, because, you know, someone may come out there and say, yeah, we're going to plant 20 of these things there.
No, he said 12 feet.
Oh, 12 feet?
10 footers.
Oh, 10 footers, okay. And they grow...
And they run a three-foot berm, and they grow four feet a year.
Perfect.
Yeah, if you, if you look at the, on the daytime, the, the trees behind Town Hall, that, those grew tremendously.
So I guess at the end of the day, everything we discussed, which I'm, you know, again, we, I'm busy, I forget sometimes, this morning when I called, I didn't want to catch anybody by surprise, I, I wanted to just mention a few things, but one of the things that I really would like to see is that sewer pipe come to our property line. I'd like to have some sort of understanding on the quality of fence that's going to be put up, that it's, it's going to be a quality fence, do you know what I mean?
I'm not sure that's something...
So I can answer the sewer, the sewer is yes. Yeah, we can put a stub, we can put a stub in and bring it into the property, makes perfect sense. You don't want to take the fence down...
Right.
Right.
To connect to the sewer, so that's, that's fine. As far as the, you know, that will have to be between you and the builder.
Right.
I don't see how...
Yeah, well, I was just going to say...
We can't, I don't, I don't see how you can condition that.
No, we can't. What I was going to say is, the suggestion is, if the person looking to develop the property presents to Mr. Ladonie, this is what I'm looking at, to do a fence, and he wants a, a better fence, maybe you can meet him in the middle, and you pick up part of the cost as well, out of fairness.
But is there any more approvals that he has to do on, I mean, he just designs the house and come out?
Conservation.
Conservation. So I just didn't know if this was our last opportunity, you know, to, to make sure everything was clear, if that's something...
Well, you really, this is your last opportunity. Conservation's going to talk about conservation stuff, wetlands, and they're not going to, none of the stuff that we're talking about today has to do with conservation.
No, it doesn't.
It's all inside the buffer zone, they're, they're not going to...
There's one other consideration while we're here, and again, I can pass this around if you want to know, but I just want to make sure, if you're looking at the property, this area right, right here...
Microphone.
Hold on.
It's cleaned out.
This area right here is cleared out, so that the fence is clear and the yard, okay, that will be squared off, because there's some, in that corner...
Invasives and stuff in that area.
Yeah.
He's going to take, that's all going to get taken down.
Okay.
That's the only way he's going to put the fence and berm.
This may be a dumb question, but I am, I do want to ask. That parcel B4 will become part of our property, right? I'm not going to have two pieces of property, we're going to have one.
It'll come out to like...
So you, so the way it works is, this, the planning board will sign this. Planning board's going to sign this plan, it's going to go on record at the registry of deeds, and then their attorney will prepare a deed to convey it to you at no cost, a dollar or whatever, and that's it. So now it's your land.
It's 149 Chestnut Street.
It's going to be 149 Chestnut Street, but it'll, and your, your title, your title will have two parcels, what you bought there, and then that second parcel. It will always have that, because that's how it's been created.
But if we wanted to do something someday, build out on our property, that would be part of it?
Yep.
You'll own it outright.
Okay, no, I just, no, I didn't know if it was, you know, we had to make it one, one parcel.
It's contiguous.
Okay.
Anything else?
I assume that the notation about the moving of the shed is a moot point now.
It's already on there.
Thank you for...
The shed will still be on, a piece of the shed's still going to be on, it's all moving it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
The shed may be not an issue, it's actually a playhouse, and we may just pass it on, but thank you. I'd just like to say A-plus to everyone on their presentations tonight, good job.
School, you can take the school committee out.
All right, so I think we'll, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Fox, move on.
Good night. We'll let you both.
So just to recap, there's a lot going on there.
Hi, guys.
We're going to add the fence to the rear lot line, and we're going to bring the sewer connection onto the property. And that's it. And then the Ladonis can just talk to the, whoever the owner is, and if, if they want to shift the road, I mean, if the, it's a road, but it's, as long as it's in the layout, I mean, I don't think you care. And then the other thing would be, you know, along the rear there, if they wanted to take some of those...
Trees and move them.
Trees and move them along to the side, who cares, you know?
Even also, like, the street trees, the ones that are on the other side of the driveway, if they want to move them to their side...
I mean, really, who cares?
Maybe when you write your decision, you can kind of wordsmith that in there.
Okay.
We'll remember it, but...
I don't feel claustrophobic to me, but if that's what they want.
Yeah, I think you've made some fairly significant, you know, concessions on, on this, and...
Well, you guys are making fairly significant concessions too, so rightly so.
How far can you shift that driveway?
I can, see that red line? I can shift it that far over.
All the way?
There's no setback requirements for the, it's up, it's up to you where I put it. I just run it down the middle, because that's what engineers do.
Well, I would think that, I mean, then you'd be having two driveways, like, essentially in one spot. I mean, you wouldn't want to do that.
Yeah, I mean, so typically, the way the zoning is written, poorly by the way, in case you want to deal with that.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for letting me know.
The separation between driveways, it's so poorly written, that years ago, I think it was Jerry McCarty, said 10 feet, that's the number. Okay, so typically, the closest we put the driveways is 10 feet. So we wouldn't shift it all the way over.
Right, and not even that, I mean, in this case, it is a little different, because that's, you know, that, that's other driveways servicing a lot of vehicles.
Right.
So then it starts to look like a highway.
Yeah.
At least this way, you've got...
Well, you've got a little way over, you know?
Sounds like everyone has been very reasonable.
Are we going to shut the, are we going to shut the TV off?
That's right.
Uh, make a motion to close the public hearing, definitive subdivision Chestnut Street, proposed two-lot subdivision Hamilton Square at Chestnut LLC.
Second. All those in favor, roll call.
Jeff, aye.
Waiting for Kevin.
I think Kevin might be on mute.
Kevin, unmute yourself.
Uh, I know I am muted.
Nope, you're muted, you're good. You can vote.
Kevin, yeah, Kevin, aye.
Tracy, aye.